I'd like to welcome everybody to the Town Council meeting, Monday, September 8th, 2025, 7:00 PM, McKinnon Council Chambers. The agenda one, pledge allegiance. Agenda item number two, roll call.
Counselor Lazo.
Present.
Counselor Montigny.
Present.
Counselor Adams.
Present.
Counselor Chenier.
Present.
Counselor Daniel.
Present.
Counselor Dow.
Present.
Counselor Kelly.
Present.
Counselor Ortiz.
Excused.
Counselor Provost.
Present.
Thank you.
We have a quorum. Moving on, agenda item number three, considered except the minutes of August 25th, 2025.
So moved.
We have motion and second. Are there any additions, corrections, or deletions to the minutes of that meeting? If not, all of the favor. Opposed? Moving on to subcommittees, agenda item number four, Department of Public Works.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. We have not had a meeting since our last Town Council meeting. We do not have one scheduled, but I am working with the DPW on the trench regulations this week. So they'll be coming forward to the Town Council. Thank you.
Moving on, Education Services.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have not had a meeting and we do not have a meeting scheduled, but we have the School Committee presentation tonight.
Moving on, General Government.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. We had a, General Government had a meeting on August 27th, 2025. We, and we considered agenda items number nine, 10, and 12.
Thank you. Moving on, Planning Development.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. We have not had a meeting since the last Council meeting, but there is one in the works coming up shortly. Thank you.
Thank you. Protecting the Bertrand property. A report at this time. We want a Chairman's announcements. I would just like to take a moment now to recognize Mary Leroy, who passed on. And she was one of the volunteers in town that worked on many boards and commissions. The family is well-known in the town of Southbridge, so I would like to call for a moment of silence Thank you very much. I would just like to comment on the tremendous roadwork that is happening. And I'd like to commend the Town Manager on the expedience of the fence on Hamilton Street that is already being done. And it was one of the dangerous places that a child could slip off that sidewalk under this fence and go down about 25 feet into the real bed. I noticed today they repaired that fantastic schedule. That's all I have for Chairman's announcements. I'd like to move on to Town Manager's announcements. Town Manager?
I have no announcements.
Moving on to presentations. At this time, I take great pleasure, Southbridge School Committee, capacity building status update by School Committee Chairman Brittany Davis. Brittany, welcome.
Hello.
Before we start, I just want to comment that the Superintendent, Bill Metzger got sick before. He would have been here tonight, and I told him, no problem, you're excused. And, you know, no, nobody's hurt by it, you know?
I think we, he's doing a good job, and I think we, we have to be happy, make sure
he gets better. Thank you.
Thank you. We're having some technical difficulty, so I can't share my presentation, but I'll make sure to send it to you guys after. So we're just here to give an update on what Phase Two consists of. We were here, I believe it was the end of last year, to give an update on Phase One, which we graduated from. We are currently in Phase Two. So part of that is continuing to maintain positive working relationships with the Receiver and act as stewards for the school district. Our Receiver has currently been attending our monthly meetings at the school committee. We've had improved communication and collaboration with Dr. Metzger. Carla and I are meeting with him every month to set up our agenda. I've been meeting with him regularly, as well as some of the school committee members. School committee members will attend EHS Subcommittee Budget Presentation. The Chair will co-present with Superintendent Receiver. That was currently done in April. I believe it was in April, earlier this year, during the last budget season, and we'll continue that sort of moving forward. Possible summer workshop with Superintendent and School Committee facilitated by MAS C. We just recently completed a policy training at our last August meeting, and we're continuing to work with our Field Director and DESI as far as any trainings that need to be completed going forward. The School Committee members should continue to follow the norms that were adopted on 211. That document that was raised by one of our School Committee members is not currently on the website, so that's something that we can work on, so that everybody has access to knowing what our norms were that we adopted. Attend session with the Town Manager and Town Council Chair related to Robert's Rules and Effective Meetings. That is scheduled for tomorrow at 6:00 PM, where we will be completing that training before our regularly scheduled meeting. Attend a webinar on open meeting law conducted by the Attorney General's Office. Currently, five out of our seven members have attended that online. Members should be documenting any type of collaboration they are doing related to the state delegation, Town Council, public safety, parent advisory councils, community agencies, student government, PTOs, and Southbridge Business Partnerships. Recently, we elected two liaisons for the CPAC and ALPAC. And at each meeting, members discuss their collaboration, things that they've done towards our DESI plan at each meeting. And we're all continued to encourage to meet with Town Council members individually to maintain that relationship. The School Committee will productively participate in two to three meetings on important district topics such as curriculum, budget, special education facilitated by the Receiver. Earlier in June, at our meeting, we completed a brainstorming exercise where each member was able to identify like different topics or things that we wanted to learn about. So we have that kind of going forward, as well as presentations in October and November already set up for our meetings. And the Receiver is doing a presentation tomorrow as well. So those are all of the items currently listed for Phase Two. I'm open to any questions if you guys have any.
Are there any questions? Counsel?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. Well, I'd just like to say thank you and commend you on the progress that the School Committee and the School Department is making. I'm glad to hear the Receiver is attending your meetings. I would, at this point in time though, is there a estimated timeline as to when you move into the final phase and when Receiver ship will end?
We do not have a specific date set yet. I know that the new Commissioner is making his rounds around the state, so I know that's something that we are waiting for, is for us to have our meeting with him.
Thank you.
Counselor Adams?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First of all, I want to appreciate the Vice Chair and the Chair meeting me that one evening to talk about where you guys are at and how you're moving forward. How many phases do you have?
Three.
So now you're in the second phase. The third one is hopefully sometime this, next six months, maybe?
Yes, we're pretty much almost through Phase Two, which is really just about continuing our trainings and continuing to work together and collaborate. We're going to be moving forward with our first Subcommittee pretty soon, working with MAS C on policies. So we're moving forward.
Sir, I just got to ask the question, are there any roadblocks that you are seeing right now that are delaying any, any movement forward for you? Do you foresee anything?
Right now, I think it's just waiting to meet with the Commissioner, because I know it's been expressed by Town Council, other School Committee members, as well as the public, as sort of getting a date of when we can continue to move forward to Phase Three.
And the School Board members, have they all, I listened last year while I was off the Council, and I noticed that you had a couple individuals that had been here for quite some time on the School Board, but had never really gone to see the schools. Are we having that problem still now, or are we?
No, so that was part of Phase One, was making sure that each member was visiting the schools, and it's something that we need to continue to do moving forward. So I know our two newer members that joined the end of, earlier this year, towards the end of, before election season, Maria and Norma, visited all of the schools, as well as Carla and I and Martina did as well. We have Stephanie New this year, and so that's something that will be announced tomorrow, but starting in September, we can go ahead and set up our visits to visit the schools.
Last, I just want to point out, I appreciate all the hard work you guys are doing, and we're looking forward to taking back the schools, but I appreciate Juan spending his time. I know we were supposed to meet today, and the Superintendent was, fell ill a little bit today, so we rescheduled that appointment. And I appreciate the honesty and the open discussion transparency that you guys have provided to all of us in the community as we move forward to take it back over our schools. So thank you so much for your hard work, and that goes for all your, your Board members. Thank you.
Thank you.
Counselor Chenier?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I may be a little bit premature, but, and when do you anticipate that the Town of Southbridge will be able to hire its own superintendent to assist in getting rid of the state? Do you have any, is that in Phase Three or the end of Phase Two?
That's part of Phase Three from my recollection of the document, because we have to learn how to like evaluate the Superintendent, and that would be like a separate training.
And that'll be done before the, the end of Phase Three?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any other comments by Counselors? Counselor Montigny?
Thank you. I just wanted to say thanks to the School Committee Chairman for reaching out to schedule something through EHS. We just thought it would be much more appropriate to come up here. And I just want to let everybody know that I've met with Mr. Metzger myself. There's just a much more open door policy of communication and transparency than with the last Receiver. So, well, I think we definitely all want to get to the finish line. He, he seems to be just a phone call away at this moment. But I have talked with just various people during this process this summer, and, you know, it seems like the state is not willing to, to continue to just go on and on and on like we've been for the last nine years. I think whatever section we're in, this is the end. Hopefully, it doesn't take three years. I'd like to see it take about half that much time, but we can just hopefully wait and your, your conversation with the Commissioner might be really valuable to the citizens and the councilors and other elected officials, because I think at this point, after almost a decade, we need some sort of indication from the state as to when we are getting out. I think it's way too long without that, but other than that, thank you so much. I really appreciate you, having you out here.
Thank you.
Any other comments by Counsel? If not, in a closing statement, I'd just like to thank Juan Rodriguez from DESI. He has been what I call a great liaison in deflating a very high-pressured system under the wrong leadership. And by opening up the transparency, working with the School Committee, it's a whole different atmosphere right now. When Bill Metzger calls, it's like you're happy to hear from him, and you're willing to go, what do you, what do you need, you know? And I think that atmosphere is what's going to turn everything around in the town of Southbridge. The state has to believe that we're ready. And I think that our School Committee is moving in the right direction. I think Juan understands the makeup of Southbridge, the Council, the School Committee, and various people in the town. He's very workable, and the new, the new Commissioner, Pedro Martinez, is, he's got to get his feet planted, and I think once he sees what's going on, nobody wants Receiver ship. Once these three schools come out, I don't think you'll ever see it again. But I think it was a mistake by the previous people, maybe four Commissioners ago, the one I did meet him. And I think going forward, we all learned a lot as a community, as a Board of Education. I think we're, we're firm and steadfast on turning this around and getting it back. And I want to thank you for providing the leadership as the Vice Chair and the Chair. There's a learning curve to everything. I'm still learning, 30 years later. But I, I commend you, and I'm looking forward to tomorrow night, where we can have a, you know, parliamentary procedure, talk about the agenda, just work together on getting things going. I'm sure that you have a lot of ideas already, and if I can help out, I'm there for you.
Absolutely, thank you.
If there's no further discussion?
Thank you.
Thank you. Any, there are no other presentations. Moving on to eight, Citizens Forum. Are there any citizens at this time that would like to talk, address the Town Council on any issues not on the agenda? Change your name and address?
Hi, I'm Gus Steve, 771. I'm in Lebanon Hill Road. As most of you know, I wasn't at Council for nine years, and I just wanted to bring up something that I know several of us in the community have been thinking of, and some, some of you guys have been thinking of, and that's the Town Manager's evaluation. As you might know, that's part of his contract. It's also good business practice, because as, no matter how close you may be off, off duty with Jack or any other Town Manager, because this isn't just about Jack. It's about the fact that they are our employees as Town, they are not friends, and we need to treat them as our most, most valuable paid employee. And I just wanted to bring that up, because I know that's been kind of thrown around, it hasn't gone anywhere since you guys hired him. And it's a, it's a violation of his contract, and we need to get this done. Also, I just wanted to point out that in that vein, I'd like to actually suggest a couple of key goals that really need to be looked at. One is revamping the munis system, which is, from what I keep hearing from people, it's a mess. Even when we started it, when I was on the Council, training was a problem, getting communication with the people who ran munis was a problem. And from what I understand, today, it's not being effectively used, it's not being consistently used. There are modules that we pay for that are not being used at all, and that's at, at best a waste of money, if not a time, everybody's time. So that kind of really needs to get fixed. And the other element, and I think we can do some of that by talking to some of the people that work for our Town and work for other towns, including Counselor Adams. You, you see it in Oxford and other places, so I can, I'm sure you can give some ideas of how to work with it better than we now have. And the other thing I wanted to point out is, is fixing our atrocious website. I know that's constant complaint from everybody. I know Counselor Montigny has brought up a few times, and it's still terrible. It's not at all user-friendly. Last week, I tried finding something I knew was there just a couple of weeks ago, and no matter how much I searched for it, how I phrased it, you couldn't find anything. It was useless. I mean, that's our portal to the world that the people look for, for key, important stuff that are public documents, and if you can't find it, what good is it? And that's, that's all I had to say right now.
Thank you. Are there any other citizens that would like to address the Southbridge Town Council on any issues not on the agenda? State your name and address.
Shelley Klein, 56 Newell Ave. I'm talking tonight about the trash issues that have been an issue really since the public hearing at the end of June. Several questions were raised by Kevin Splain and Roland LaRochelle during that public hearing for the Curbside Enterprise Fund regarding rate setting, and how the cost for hazardous waste days and DPW yard waste for being accounted for. The questions largely went unanswered, with the exception that the Town Manager would discuss with Town Council, and this would be done before the bills were issued for Q1 of FY26. The Curbside Enterprise Fund has not been an agenda item on, at a Town Council meeting since the public hearing, and many people's questions, including my own, have continued to go unanswered. In early August, I began submitting FOIA requests for curbside financial documents, and over the last month, I've met with Maritza, the Solid Waste Agent, who has been really wonderful in getting information, Board of Health Member, and Accounting, to give a better understanding of how and why the rates increased from 115 to 150, 50 a quarter. A quick review of the financials shows that the Curbside Enterprise Fund has been paying, paid $40,333 for trash to be picked up from the Town Hall, Library, Police Station, Fire Station, Community Center, and DPW. The curbside subscribers...
Excuse me, could you pull the microphone down so we can hear you?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Have paid $63,000 for hazardous waste days, which is an event that's open to all residents in the town, and $49,905 to fund the DPW yard and waste dumpsters, which can be accessed by anyone, and $4,300 for bulk items such as mattresses, refrigerator from the community center, shingles, and other items abandoned on the roadside. These items total $158,870 that came from the Curbside Fund for services that are accessed by everybody in the town. So the state considers that an illegal tax, meaning that a small group of people in a town shouldn't have to pay fees for services that everybody in town can access. And so, to make a long story short here, people have asked for answers. We don't have answers. It's the middle of September, and I think people deserve answers on, on how this budget is being run, how we got to $150, why, when I look at the budget, we have a surplus of $240,000 for FY25, but we were told there were no retained earnings and no surplus. When I met with Accounting, she did say that they inadvertently have been paying the municipal buildings from the Curbside Fund and that she would reverse it. I have concerns about reconciliations and how frequently those are happening. So I'm hoping that the Council will plan something in the future to address these issues. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other citizens that would like to address the Council on any issues not on the agenda tonight? Moving on to agenda item number nine, vote to confirm the appointment of Denise Clemens as a citizen member to the General Government Subcommittee effective immediately through June 30th, 2026, Ethics in Good Standing.
Second.
Motion by Dow. Seconded?
Second.
Counsel?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. This matter was taken up at the August 27th General Government Meeting and unanimously voted for approval.
Unanimous to confirm at Subcommittee, any discussion? If not, all of the favor? Opposed? Unanimous of all present. Moving on to 10, vote to approve the Third Amendment to Lease and Lease Extension between the Town of Southbridge Landlord and the Massachusetts Department of Transportation Motor Vehicles Division, also known as the Registry of Motor Vehicles Division Tenant, to commence a September 15th, 2025 through September 14th, 2026, and allow the Town Manager to sign all related paperwork.
So moved. Second.
Is a motion, a second, discussion? Counsel Kelly?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. This matter was taken up on August 27th at the General Government Meeting, and it was approved for, it was approved for the Council's consideration, two to one.
Any further discussion? Counsel Dow and Counsel Lynn?
Thank you, Chair, through you. I'm not happy with that lease. They keep extending on their own, where the best for them is not what the best for the Town. I believe, why wouldn't deserve commitment, three years or five years, waiting for them to find another place out of Town or in Town to disstep, you know, out of the building? What, we should have more benefits and let them luck. The lease three years, we, we spent $75,000 to fix the, the air systems there. They're supposed to have a long-term release every year. They're trying us if, if, you know, we leaving, we, we not going to stay there, you got to keep the price the same and different things. So I, I believe they, they try to control the Town. I'm, I'm going to be voting no on it, because I don't think it's fair. We just rely on what the, the best for them, not the best for the Town. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just, I'm glad that the RMV is extending out here for one year. Within the memo that the Town Manager had provided us and during the General Gov Subcommittee meeting, they are committed to Southbridge. They're finding a home right now. I believe, I don't know if they've, they've identified one or not. I apologize, I forget off the top of my head, but the fact is that they are staying in Southbridge. They've made that commitment to the Town Manager, and I know they're looking at that right now. I believe there was a proposal for somebody, they went to see one place here in Southbridge, and it didn't fit the requirements. So I think at this point in time, I'm glad the RMV is staying within the Town itself. I expect them to keep their word and stay in the Town of Southbridge, period, and for a longer time than just this one year extension. So thank you very much. I'll be voting no.
Any further discussion? Just a quick comment. They are going to stay in Southbridge, they are committed to staying here. It's going to take them one year for the person to retrofit the building you're moving into, where they can actually utilize it. So they need to stay here one more year, and they're done with us. We're done with them, we can move the building on. Any further discussion? Not all of those in favor? Opposed? One opposed? Motion passes. Moving on to 11, vote to authorize deer hunting in the Town's watershed lands, starting September 15th, 2025, Connecticut, and October 6th, 2025, Massachusetts, ending on December 31st, 2025, subject to all hunters on Town lands, comply with all Commonwealth of Massachusetts and State of Connecticut laws, and allow the Town Manager to sign all related documents.
So moved. Second.
Motion, a second, discussion?
Thank you. So there was a letter from Fieldstone, who does our watershed management, regarding allowing hunting. This year, if you've noticed, we've done it the last couple of years. This year, you'll see that we've added Connecticut in there. The reason Connecticut came up was because we do own land through the watershed in Connecticut, in the area of Woodstock, Connecticut, and a gentleman came up and asked if he could hunt in that area. The reason we have allowed the Town Manager to sign any related paperwork is that in Connecticut, is unlike Massachusetts, Attorney Kelly, I'm sure, maybe can articulate the laws, because we're a Commonwealth, we have to post it. In Connecticut, they have to get the landlord's permission. So in order to do that legally, I have to sign a form through the Fisheries Wildlife in Connecticut to allow that person to hunt on our lands. And their hunting season is a little different. So we coordinated with Steve Gregwire on this, and to allow the hunting in the two different periods of time. So, thank you.
Counsel Chenier, then Counsel Dow.
Through the Town Manager, if a Connecticut hunter comes into Massachusetts, so they're going to be required to have a Massachusetts license?
They would, yes.
And as Massachusetts would be required to have in Connecticut? Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Chair, through you. Obviously, correct, you got to have a Connecticut license, but they need the permission from the Connecticut, the wildlife, or because you're already authorized to be, hunt anybody from Town or Mass? They can just purchase the Connecticut license and go hunt on the Townland there, because obviously we're approving it tonight.
They would need the permission of us as the landowner to hunt on our property.
So every individual, they need a written note from the Town?
Correct. There's a form that was provided to me from the Connecticut Department of Energy Environmental Protection that outlines what area that he's requesting to hunt in, and they, they're supposed to come to the landowner and sign for it. And he, he, he does training classes on this kind of items, and he brought it to our attention and was seeking permission, so that's why it's before us.
Any further discussion? If not, all of those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous of all present. Moving on, agenda item number 12, vote to authorize the Town Manager in the Airport Commission to proceed with negotiations with parties for land leases and parcels for the lease of an airport property over a term of 20 years, with two 10-year, which would be a 10-year options, for a total of 40 years. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
We have a motion, we have a second discussion. I'm going to turn it over to, go ahead.
This matter was discussed at the August 27th General Government Meeting. It was approved for Council's consideration on a two to one vote.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman Lazo, Rep. Clemens Airport Commission. A little history on land leases at airports. It's an approved method that's approved by FAA and Mass DOT. Number of airports in Massachusetts have, have these land leases, as well as other, other states. New Bedford, Worcester has one, Taunton has it, Westfield Barnes have these, these leases. And basically, what it is, is a way or method to grow airports, to bring, to bring people in, build hangars, build buildings, bring their planes in and expand the airport, which uses more of our facilities, buys more gas, helps our mechanics, and it just helps the general growth of the airport. We have a number of people that are looking to move into the Southbridge area. We have one, one firm that wants to come in from Worcester. They want to bring in some, a little bit bigger airplanes, which is, is better for, for the, for the airport. Possibly, we can move into some jet fuel as well, some sales, which will grow revenue. The reason for the 20 to 10 and 10 is, basically what happens is, originally it was a 20-year term, and the FAA kind of controls this. They want, basically, they're allowing people to lease land, build buildings, and after the end of the term, the building becomes Town property. This used to be 20-year leases, however, with the cost of building a building now, and the cost going up, they have allowed it to go to 40 years. So basically, it's a 20-year with a 10-year renewable, two 10-year renewables, so 40 years. At the end of 40 years, the key, they hand the keys to the Town, and the Town now can rent the hangar out and do what they want to do with it, or rent it, you know, back to the same people. We have had another hangar at the airport. It was, land lease was done back in around 2000, in which now the Town owns that hangar. I'm renting that one to Caradona Aviation, the mechanic up there, and he's got a thriving business in that hangar. So it's something we've done in the past, we just haven't done it for a number of years, we haven't had the interest. So, you know, we've been talking to another, number of airports. We put this lease together, it's one that's been, had been pre-approved by FAA, but we'll still have to go back to them. Basically, the FAA kind of, they want the leases to go out, they want people to build hangars, but they don't want boats and cars, they want... They want airplanes there, so it's gotta be aviation use. And so basically, uh, we would lease the land on a per square foot basis, and that money would go into the Airport Enterprise Fund. Uh, now, there's a building standing there. For instance, the one, uh, the first people are looking a hundred by a hundred hangar. That's well over a million dollar hangar, and the town will collect property taxes on that. So, uh, we get the, the fee for the, for the land, and then the town would collect the, the property taxes, and that would go into the, the general fund coffers.
Any discussion? Counselor Dow.
Thank you, Chair, through you. You might, most of you not agreeing with me, but I don't believe we should give our land to anyone. We should be controlled from our land. The gentleman, he wanna lease it for 20-year, another 10 and 10. The lease doesn't say he cannot re-lease it. So we're gonna give him the property for 400. He's gonna build a building, and he can, uh, lease it or rent it to another person for 20-year for more money, and the town have no control of that. I know they have to meet certain rules and regulations, but it's no control who's gonna be there. If there's only one person is gonna be renting that, you have no control on whose mechanic is gonna be there, because they're renting their garage, they can get your own mechanic. You might not get no work, nothing there. Uh, I mean, I don't believe the town should give up their land for 40 years for $400. I mean, I understand it costs a million dollars to build a building. You might not agree with me, but this is my opinion. You don't have to agree with it. Please, you know, you don't need to make any faces. I have a right to say what I need to say. So I think, uh, it's a shady deal here. I don't like the deal. I'm not gonna support it. Thank you.
Any other discussion by any of the councils? If not, all those in favor? Opposed? Want to oppose? Motion passes. Moving on to Agenda Item Number Thirteen, Counselors' Forum. Counselor Shinia.
Nothing tonight.
Counselor Povos.
Nothing, nothing tonight.
Counselor Daniels.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. I just wanna remind people that on Saturday, September 20th, we have the Autumn Fest in town, which is also being joined by the Southbridge Police Department this year and their night out. It should be a great time all day long. So I just wanna remind people that it is coming. And on September 27th, we have our Hazardous Waste Day, um, at the Town, uh, Town DPW. Please start gathering up your material that needs to be disposed of properly. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Dow.
Thank you, Chair, through you, to the town manager. Any idea when we will have those, uh, station computer and tax collector in the building department to help our residents paying some tax and, uh, you know, be educated how to apply for a permit? We have a lot of elderly in town. They don't have a, a computer, if they have computer, they don't have the experience to apply for a permit online. And I have another thing. The building department still, they don't, they don't accept cash for any permit or anything. I mean, I don't know what kinda public service here, how we helping our residents. We become, uh, money hungry. I don't see it, we here for our citizen and our residents. We just see it for, uh, our, our employee to be so comfortable getting a lot of money and sitting all day chatting, talking, babysitter, uh, and let the residents do under all, all, all work and no help, no support. So I, I, I'd like to see those station come ASAP, Mr. Town Manager, please. That would be helpful, and maybe we can start accepting cash. It don't have to be at the building department. Maybe they can go pay at the tax collector and get a stamp as a receipt and go back to the department. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Are you all set? Counselor Kelly.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. Thursday is September 11th. And I was thinking about that today, and realized it's been 24 years since that dreadful day on September 11th, 2001. And I couldn't believe it, because I remember that day like it was yesterday. I know exactly where I was. I know exactly what I was doing. I was a deputy staff adjutant at Randolph Air Force Base. It was a normal day. It, on that day, we, we were offering legal assistance to our, our airmen and their families. We had a lobby full of people, and we had a small TV in that area, in that area. And in those days, it was a tube TV, about 20 inches. And I walked by the lobby, and on the TV, I saw a picture of one of the towers with the smoke billowing out. And somebody said a plane crashed into the, into the tower. My initial thought was it was a small plane. It's happened before. It's happened to the Empire State Building. And then while I was watching, another plane came into view, a large plane, and crashed into the second tower. At that moment in time, I knew we were at war. Not 10 seconds later, I get a call from the commander's office, and he was activating the battle staff. So I was on the battle staff, and I ran down to our, the room that we had designated for the battle staff, and there I sat for the next 24 hours, trying to figure out what the heck was going on. I remember everything about that day, everything. We had close friends in the Pentagon. When the Pentagon was hit, we knew nothing about their, their health, their welfare, and it was just wait and see. My former wife's brother was a rookie cop in New York City that day. He went incommunicado for 24 hours because of the duties he had. We didn't know where he was. We didn't know if he was in the towers or wherever it was. It was a very scary, scary day. A lot of loss of life. But it also, um, started, uh, a series of conflicts with Afghanistan and Iraq. And as a result of that day, many people lost their lives, not only on 9/11, but also in the conflicts that ensued. And so I just ask everybody on September 11th, just take a moment to reflect, to pray about that day. And one of the things I wanted to point out is, after that day, I never felt more American. I never felt the country was more unified. And then I look at today, where we are. Reflect on that. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel. Counselor Adams.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. I wanna caveat off not just council, but Lieutenant Colonel Kelly's comments. I remember I was that, that day too. I was living in Okinawa, Japan. We're watching Monday Night Football on Tuesday night, Green Bay Packers, and on the Armed Forces Network. Everything got shut down right after the first plane hit. And then we started doing operations against some individuals within the Philippines, because they had Al Qaeda in that area as well. So it changed everybody's lives, and we kinda forget about our civil liberties, our rights, today for some reason. And I, I wish we had that time period back without the deaths, obviously, and the catastrophe that happened. But that being said, um, I won't be able to make the fire stations, um, 9/11 tribute. But I, I definitely have, uh, a warm heart when it comes to that time period. Anyway, so my next thing would be, I wanna thank the school committee, uh, for coming out here and giving us a brief. I think that's the first one in a long time that we've actually received from the school board, which I really appreciate it. I wanna thank Counselor Montigny for setting that whole thing up. I really do appreciate it, and I appreciate the, the state and the movement in which we're heading to take over our schools. On a, uh, other, on a note, YMCA, they had an event the other day. I'm not here to lambast them, too bad. And I'm glad that they got a new playground, but we didn't even get an invite. We just gave them $100,000, help support their youth, our youth within our community. Hundred thousand dollars. Wouldn't be so bad. It's here within our own border, Southbridge. We didn't get an invite to show that we support them as well. But got, who got invited were Charlton Slekman, who were attending that day too. So needs to say, I'm not happy with the YMCA for what transpired, especially the, the support we have given them over the years. Um, it's not always about just the, it's the thought process behind it. The Leonide J. Lemire Road Race, 76 years running. We make sure that they're included in that whole process. So I just wanted to bring that up, because I know ARPA gave them over 100,000. I'm sure the United Lends, or United Way gave them money as well out of their ARPA funds as well. So that being said, I'm glad the kids have a new playground, but I don't, I don't appreciate the leadership of the YMCA, be it here or in Worcester, not inviting the town council or the town. As far as, uh, and the next thing I wanna bring up, I did have a conversation with the chair today. I, I'm expecting to have the town manager, I appreciate it, former counselor for you bringing it up. I do expect to have, uh, to brief the, the town council before the next meeting or at the next meeting on the town manager's performance evaluation and goals and objectives. I have a copy of what I wrote down. It's a very rough draft, by the way, and I can pass out to any counselor that would like it right now. I will say that, um, it is within the contract. We have done, as far as the town council is concerned, everything we're required to do to get the, the goals and objectives over. I expect it to happen. It's a breach of contract if it does not happen. I was the first one to say during our debate, the first year that we hired on the town manager, it's not slam on the town manager, but the first year we hired this town manager, this town hall was in chaos. So I can understand the first year. But should we have done one? Yeah, by, by contract. Last year it should have happened, and this year I expect it to happen as a town counselor. If it doesn't, it's a breach of contract at that point in time. So basically, what you're telling anybody else within this community that has a contract, they can breach the contract anytime they want, because we're not gonna do anything about it. So that's all I have. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
I'd like to just make a comment on evaluation. It is in the, in the charter. It does have to happen. When this town manager got sat in the position and got the contract, maybe we should evaluate him. But we didn't, because everything was on fire. Everything was in disarray because of the mismanagement of the previous town manager. It was more important for us to spend our time in those years, straightening out our DPW, straighten out the finance department. Bills were not getting paid. Things weren't getting done. They were not rosy times. I'm a chairman that keeps a lot of dirty laundry in the closet. I was raised that way. And put the positive things out for the town of Southbridge that are actually valuable. Evaluations, they're in there, we do them. We have so many things in the chute right now. Fire department, dog kettles, road work, sidewalks, schools. I can go on and on. We have a whiteboard in the town manager's office. I, uh, my fellow colleague and I disagree about it, but I have a whiteboard in my garage, I have a whiteboard in my office. And, and you put your things down on what's in progress, and you make follow-ups and calls, and we talk about this dog kettle. Okay, he's gonna fax in, I'm gonna go see him. We, we task, taskmasters have to take the task. I will take full responsibility for not evaluating that manager in the first two years. It would have been a waste of time. I had better things to do than play with an evaluation. We had, the town hall was at bay with the finance department, and we needed our finances straightened out. I was sold a bill of goods by the previous finance director, who we find out later was not the shining star that she was. Did I wanna put that on the front page of paper? No. I wanted to just fix it, and we did, and we're gonna continue to do it. Now we're in a more controllable time. I've sat down with Counselor Adams, appointed him, he's the chairman of the Evaluation Committee. That's what we're gonna do. We're gonna evaluate him now. But everything's not on fire now. So it's always good to have an opinion, but it's better to have the history, because then all of a sudden, maybe the opinion has to be reevaluated. I only can deal with what's thrown at me. Yeah, we have charters, we have bylaws. I'm supposed to be appointing a bylaw committee, a charter revision committee, because it's written down. Is that more like, we're gonna do it? But is that the priority over fixing East Main Street? The complaints by the citizens of Southbridge? The trash problem? When an 85-year-old lady calls me up and says, I only have one bag of trash, I have to pay $1.15. I don't even put my trash, I don't even have a bin. These are common sense problems that we need to deal with as counselors. There were bigger fish to fry as a counselor, like building buildings, like the, the, uh, the police staff, fire station, and the dog kettle. We have all types of problems, and there's only so many hours in a day to do these things. So when you prioritize your day, I prioritize my day. And if I'm wrong, my fellow counselors, I want you to tell me, and tell me that I'm wrong. But the council of that run, that two years, said, let's get the stuff done. Evaluation is not the priority right now. We have bigger, bigger problems. So moving forward, we're evolving in a better area. We're coming along better. The manager's been seated. Problems have been solved. Now, I, let's, let's evaluate them. We're gonna take this evaluation, right? And what are we gonna do with it? I always looked at an evaluation as a tool to improve the town manager. Some counselors think it's to give him another contract. Some people think it's to give him a raise. Lot of people have a different concept of what the evaluation tool does. Let's put more on his plate. We can't handle what we have on the plate now. Let's put more on there. But then, if you put more on, they have no problem with that. You prioritize as a counselor. We only give them 10 things, you're gonna get two done. I've been in this 30 years. I've seen it come and go. They come up, how come you're not a vet? We do this. I, I really take everybody's opinion seriously. But when you get in the boardroom and you have to do the job, it's just a little bit different than sitting out here and putting a TV show on. I think when we put our work boots on and roll our sleeves up, I think this council in the last few years has done a lot of things that have been put on backburners. We're getting it done. We're gonna continue. We're not perfect. We will not get everything done. But we're gonna continue to put our best efforts forward. And I commend Counselor Adams for taking on the task of the evaluation. It's another piece of what we have to do. So we will do it, because by, by right, it's the law. So we don't wanna break the law, we'll take care of it. But going forward, just remember, what's the most important thing you want us to do? And that's what we try to do. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, can I, can I?
Go ahead, go ahead.
Thank you. So just for everybody to understand what goals and objectives are. The purpose of these goals and objectives is to provide a clear framework for evaluating the town manager's performance and guiding the priorities of the municipal leadership. They establish measurable expectations, promote accountability, and align the town manager's work with the needs and priorities of our community. If you don't set goals and objectives, you could have all these projects going on, but if they're not leaning into a, a bigger picture of what is the goal? Infrastructure, that's cool. That's one thing that we may wanna take a look at, uh, we have been for quite some time. Another thing is how's the schools? How's the financial acumen? When you do evaluation, it's a boilerplate. The evaluation is six items, it's boilerplate information. Um, every, almost every town manager gets something like that. But that being said, this piece of paper, A, like I said, is part of the contract, but at the same time, it's one of those things that the town council can measure, the growth of our community. And if we have to change it and tweak it, that's our responsibility, is to change it and tweak it. We are supposed to, it is not just the chairperson's responsibility. It is the entire nine councils that are up here, period. Not one person can stop those. It's nine individuals that are up here that are elected by the populace. So, that being said, I have this down. I have done my part to ensure the accuracy. I have no problem sitting down with the town manager to go over this. This is part of a requirement when you set goals and objectives, is to sit down and then make sure that we're doing everything right. It is not to set somebody up for failure. I've seen evaluations set up just to fail somebody. It's to make sure that individual in that position succeeds. That means the town succeeds in its goals. And that's the purpose behind this. That's it. I will say, and I'm, I'm sure I'm a record player here, and they're tired of hearing this. 26 years I was evaluated, from every 30 days to once a year to every time I moved. You were required to get an evaluation. There was goals set up for you. And those, that's how you got promoted. That's how you moved forward within the ranks itself. And that's how you ended up getting certain positions. Nobody should be scared or worried over goals and objectives. Thank you. That's all I have. Rest of the evening.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair. Since we talked about the goals and objectives a little bit, the goals and objectives or his performance is in his contract and not in the charter. and objectives or his performance is in his contract and not in the charter. In the contract, it says that we're going to be part of that discussion of what those goals and objectives are going to be, along with the town manager. Am I correct? Is that how we're going to work?
Yes.
It's already done. I sent you guys an email. Well, I sent all the town counselors an email, asking you by a certain date to provide me goals and objectives and your thoughts.
When did you do that, may I ask?
July, I believe it was 14th.
Oh, okay. That was October and May.
If if I could just add to this, I've already talked to Counselor Adams. We're scheduling a meeting for the council and the manager to 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 work beat on this, and we're going to do this in before the next meeting.
Is that form in the email? Is the form that you come up with in the email?
So what I did was...
You talked about today that...
So what we did, what I did, was after the town council chair asked me to to take it on, I emailed all the town counselors. So you get this to me by this date. Obviously, I accept after that because it takes some time to put it all together. At that point in time, I took that, consolidated what you have all asked me to to provide. At that point in time, it's my responsibility at that point in time, as a representative of the town council, to sit down with the town manager and go over that and hash out what's good, bad, indifferent, combine things, stuff like that, and tighten it up. After that, you sit down and have a regular town council meeting or special town council meeting, and that's the place we're discussing. That's where the town council say, no, I don't like this. We amend it. No, no, nothing off my back. All I have to do is delete or add. And then we vote on it as it as it is or amend it, and then we move along.
Okay. I just, I didn't get the email. That was during the, when I was injured.
No, no worries.
But I'll look for it. I would appreciate a copy of...
Sure, absolutely. And I also mentioned it a couple of weeks ago that I'd be doing the presentation.
Yeah, I know. You think you did.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I will serve as the chairman of the council to have this meeting and to get it through. I will not be filling out an evaluation form. I evaluate this guy on a daily basis. I don't need another meeting or another piece of paper. So I'm going to take care of my council duties as a chairman to get the chairman and everybody together, and then you can do the evaluation. I'll basically direct traffic.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to, oh, excuse me, Counselor Montigny. I tied up here.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Just, there seems to be a lot more to talk about now. And when it comes to evaluations, I remember my first year getting elected, I was screaming to make the schools one of the goals and objectives, and it did not take. But I did fill out the, I did fill out the goals and objectives this year for the evaluation. And if we could shine the spotlight back on the previous town managers' previous human resources and previous finance director's office. We walk into the town manager's office when Jack gets hired, and there's, obviously, everybody knows the six-figure health insurance mistake from human resources. But there's a penalty from the IRS just sitting in the drawer that the previous town manager didn't tell anybody about. And you go downstairs to the finance department. Former counselor Steve mentions Munis modules not being used, but the finance department's running half the budget out of spreadsheets and not telling anybody where everything is. So, I mean, you guys got to remember what's going on at the end of the day. You know, we got free cash trying to get certified and get this money from the schools, from the state in time, so we can actually run our town. But I have taken part in all the festivities regarding the evaluation. Thank you very much, the school committee, for reaching out. It was great. It's been great to meet with Mr. Metzger too, like I said. And I did want to echo Counselor Adams and Kelly and say, everybody should please take a second on 9/11. I do remember being in eighth grade social studies. Everything stopped, and we're all watching. And I'll tell you what, you certainly don't think that someday, 30 years later, or 24 years later, you never think that you're going to be colleagues with people that were really heavily and closely involved in things like this. So I sincerely appreciate everybody who was serving during this time, especially. It was the first thing that I remember as a kid, being the really, really important thing that happened to the United States of America. And with that, I have no more comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on, discussion next meeting date. Your chair?
Town council meeting is Monday, September 22nd, 2025, at 7:00 PM in the council chambers.
Thank you. Moving on to 15, vote to enter into executive session pursuant to Massachusetts General Law Chapter 38, 21, under the following sections. Two, to conduct strategy sessions in participation for negotiations with the non-union personnel and conduct collective bargaining sessions and contract negotiations with non-union personnel. Three, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the public body and the chair so declares collective bargaining units. Six, to consider the purchase, exchange, lease, and value of real property if the chair declares that an open meeting law may have a detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the public body. Do I motion?
So I'm on the second.
Motion and second, roll call.
Counselor Adams.
Yes.
Counselor Kelly.
Yes.
Counselor Dow.
Yes.
Counselor Daniel.
Yes.
Counselor Montigny.
Yes.
Counselor Lazo.
Yes.
Counselor Provost.
Yes.
And Counselor Shenyi.
Yes.
All unanimous, the town council will adjourn into executive session and not return into open session. Thank you very much.